Good evening. Welcome to the special town council meeting of Thursday, March 31st, 2022 at 7:00 PM here at the McKinnon Council Chambers. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, like a god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, we'll call Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Adams is present. Counselor Katona?
Absent.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Dowd?
Present.
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Lozlo?
Present.
Counselor Marquetti?
Present.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Present.
I gotcha.
So we have eight, Mr. Chair.
We have eight. Thank you very much for having me. Item number four, consider and accept the special town council minutes from Monday, March 7th, 2022.
So moved.
Okay, very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Counselor Marquetti.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add an agenda item for Citizens Forum.
Second.
All those in favor? Very good. Item number 4A, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens in the audience that would like to approach the podium to speak to an issue not on tonight's agenda? Very good. We'll move on to item number five, update and discuss the curbside trash and recycling Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's not really too much updates. I'm sure there'll be some discussion this evening, but I wanted to go over a few, what we've done the last couple of years really quick of the meetings, not give another presentation. I think we've done that a few times. So just want to go back, March 2019 to June 2020, we had a total of 13 curbside committee meetings. We also presented the outcome or the two presentations to the town council in the town on November 2nd, 2020, and October 4th, 2021. October 27th, 2021, Ms. Smith, town manager, Mr. Pelletier met to discuss options, how to proceed. So that was staff and myself, some staff members and myself. The purpose behind that meeting was which way to go, what way were we going to present to the town for them to make a decision. In between that period of time, there's been quite a few meetings, either one-on-one or the four-on-four or something like that. So that was between October 2021 and March of this year. January 10th, 2022, the town council voted on agenda item number 12, vote to approve the contract curbside services options within the brackets contracted by the municipality for the town of Southbridge to commence upon the expiration of the current solid waste contract with Casella and allow the town manager to sign all related documents, and that voted unanimously 7-0 at that meeting. Recently, on March 14th, town manager provided an update to the town council with further research based on the memo. This information was based on the memo from Mr. Pelletier and Ms. Smith. Also provided a cost between $1.6 million to $1.8 million cost if it was going straight through taxes, and that was based on an estimated increase of 4% per year. When the curbside committee met for between March 2019 and June 2020, we figured in about a 2% increase. Obviously, with times of change, that increased by twofold. He also, the town manager also provided a sample question to us, shall the town of Southbridge be allowed to assess an additional $1.8 million in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of curbside trash collection for the fiscal year beginning, and it said July, but with a question mark. So when he provided the presentation to us, tightened the noose as far as when it came to the amount of money, the override would have to generate if it came to pure taxes, 100% taxes being taken out of the residents or added to the property taxes of the residents. He also briefed on our current contract with Casella, gave recommendations, multiple recommendations, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, trash and recycling costs. He also reminded all of us that we need to make a decision on this ballot question by April 25th, I'm sorry, I believe it's April 25th, 2022, to meet that 35-day deadline to be able to place it on the ballot for June 14th local elections. I'm at this point in time, if this is the way that the council, we're not asking for any votes or anything like that tonight, but just wanted to remind everybody what was happening. We recommend we place it on, instead of the 25th town council meeting, we place it on April 11th town council meeting, just in case there's any type of hiccups or any delay that may take place at that point in time. So it gives us at least two meetings to make that decision for the town to go on to the ballot. I was approached by Counselor Marquetti with some concerns a week or two ago, stating that himself and other counselors within the town council had questions about funding or the cost, and I told him I would go ahead and ask the chair to place it on tonight's special town council meeting for further discussion if there's any at all.
Counselor Jovan.
Thank you. Respectfully, I do understand that we have a ballot question going. I'm just concerned with the type of question that you just have, a $1.8 million figure without, and I know that's a best estimate, but, and I know within the presentations has been that certain things may or may not be part of that curbside collection. So my thought is, is the possibility of about getting some requests for quotes or proposals or however, I know it's not subject to 30B, although I heard in another town, the administrator said it was, but I trust our town manager. But before we put it out to the ballot, I, as a voter, would want to know, what am I getting for my $1.8 million? Is it, you know, and my concern would be that we go out to bid and they say, okay, the only thing that we can do is curbside, just collection only, and everything else you don't have the ability to do. So that is my concern about putting something on the ballot without knowing exactly what services we could expect as a taxpayer, and I think that's going to be a question that many taxpayers will ask. If I'm going to vote for an override for my curbside collection or trash removal, what service am I going to get for that amount of money? And that would be just be my concern. I do understand, we're going to FY '23. Is it absolute that it has to be on the June ballot, or is there a possibility that we could do it, we have a primary coming up and we have a statewide election as well? So is it possible through you to get it on one of those ballots and have a little bit more clarity about what exactly our taxpayers are voting on? And I do understand that we want to be in a position that if it failed at the ballot box this year, the town would have to come up and pivot to say, what are we going to do? So I understand the concern on that, but there's a whole nother fiscal year, I think, or partial fiscal year that you're going to have. So that is all my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Marquetti, then Counselor Lozlo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The curbside garbage collection committee did meet for over a year, and we put all this together, what it would take to do this, how much it would cost, what it would include. Would it include garbage pickup, recycle? We did talk about a transfer station. There was also discussion that we would get to keep all of our totes, so I don't think that that would be an expense. According to Mr. Pelletier, we were going to keep all the totes, so that's something I think that we can take off the amount. But we did go through the whole thing. We said what it would include, how many residents it would include, and how much it would cost. So I don't really know what else we can do. I understand, I agree, it would be nice to know exactly the amount. I did talk to the town manager today about that, and it's kind of like, it's kind of like, well, if we say this is the amount and a company's not going to bid on it or quote on it because they don't know we're going to do it, so we're going to have to take a vote first to make sure this is what we're going to, this is the direction we're going to go, and then put it out to quote? Or are we going to put it out to quote first so that we can put it on the ballot? So you know, you know what I'm saying? It's kind of tough. Which way do you go here? Because I don't, the question is, is anyone going to want to put a quote on this, quote for this service if they're not sure we're going to go that way? So that's the problem right now. But like I said, we went through the whole thing. We said how many families, how many households, how much it's going to cost, what it's going to include, and that was all done throughout the whole year that we met. Thank you.
Would you like to respond?
Yeah, through you, just, no, I don't discount any of the work. I mean, I was grateful that we were proactive in it, I knew the amount of work that we do. I just, my question is, that is the one uncertainty that you have. Yes, there was discussions that said, these are the type of services we could provide. This is the anticipated cost. Are we certain on that cost? Okay, so if we put it out at 1.8 million, say, is there actually a purveyor out there? Because I don't want to go to the voters and throw out this question that says, these are the services, your 1.8, here you go, and then we go out, request for quotes, and it comes back and says, well, sorry, fuel cost, labor cost, all that, the only thing we're going to do is pick up your trash and maybe your recycling. That is my concern, and I don't know how to cure that based on the, and we are in economic terms. Nobody understands that more than I do on the fire station project. You know, we're working our way through those issues. So that is, that is the concern. Because again, we're trying to forecast out a year and a half before the service even takes place, or two years, we're at two years, you know? So how do you forecast that out? I'm just saying, is June the time that you absolutely have to get this ballot question in, or is it possible to maybe pin down some of the numbers and see how the economics go with elections and everything else in the economy, and that perhaps we get a better, locked-in cost of what the long term is going to be? That's my only point. No discount of what the work was, because I certainly appreciate everything that was done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Lozlo, then the town manager.
The further out you are, the more that you cannot predict. As you get closer, the numbers can tighten up because you'll know what the economy and what the cost of living is. The way it's headed now, if we plug in a number, and I think, you know, I don't want a blind ballot question. I want this thing to say, we are going to override two and a half, this is what it's going to cost, and this is what you're getting. To sit there and have them voted through and then, well, we'll decide what the options are later, I want the option there. I mean, if we're going to pay per bag, then it should be there. If it's going to be just a flat rate pickup and tax every house, you know, a lot of people are very uncomfortable with that. Spread the butter on the bread, so to speak. Let's just put it into the, but what about the guy that lives, or the lady that lives by themselves and they only do one bag of trash? But the four-family house is taxed the same as the percentage as the single-family homeowner. So it's an imbalance. Do you let the people pay for it themselves? You need the option on the table and be clear with it, and then, as far as pricing, I agree with Counselor Jovan, with an election further out in the fall is absolutely better than having it in June. The further we can go out in a close-up, and I know there's a deadline where one's going to start and one's going to stop, but that's why we're here, to make those decisions. If we're going to override two and a half, that's exactly what the question should say. We're going to override two and a half. What are we doing? We are going to do this, and this is what it's going to cost. You know, the whole, trying to play a game with the ballot to make it fit is not going to work this time. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Standing on the sidelines is Mr. Pelletier. He's here. I stepped back briefly. He can address how those numbers came, and I think he'll tell you, he was looking at contracts in the area comparables. The one thing that I would just say is, you know, we're in the midst of the budget, we have multiple things going on. If you're considering putting this off, and that's entirely your decision, I think what we would really need to do is start working a reverse timeline to get a good idea of when your drop dead date is for a ballot question, if you don't want to start the process now, so that you, you know, you ensure that you're not waiting too, too long, where you have a situation where, you know, we're not getting out, soliciting an RFP from folks. There was a question earlier, this is exempt under, as general law, Chapter 30B, Section 1. It says specifically that, let me just get it here, contracts for the collection, transportation, receipt, processing, or disposal of solid waste, recyclable, or compostable materials are part of the section that Chapter 30B does not apply to. That doesn't mean that there may be something else that we'll have to double-check, but I would still say best practices would be, we would want to put together an RFP. I have some samples from other communities that we would go out and solicit an appropriate response from various vendors to ensure we're getting what we want and we can negotiate a reasonable price. But we don't, we just want to make sure if we're going to postpone this to, say, the fall or even next spring, that we're saving enough time that if we have to have, you know, you might find yourself, if you don't do it in the fall, a special election rather than waiting to next June, so that you ensure you have adequate time to issue an RFP, get quotes, and then negotiate something, and then have a transition place for a vendor potentially, if you have somebody other than the current provider. So just want you to bear that in mind. And again, Mr. Pelletier is here, if I think if there's any specific questions of how he and Ms. Smith came up with those numbers, he's probably happy to provide you with some background.
Counselor Lozlo.
A reverse schedule, a revised schedule, the way we work in reverse is absolutely the right approach. I agree with you, town manager. My thing is, again, okay, we're going to say we have to implement this on this date, and this is when Casella is done, on this date. That's a common sense approach, I'm with you, I'm on board. How you get the data and everything by that date is probably the art. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to limit how many times I talk on this subject, but I just wanted to listen. Very good, valid questions up here. Seriously, they're good as far as proposals and stuff like that. What we did was, during the curbside collection meetings, we actually brought that up, we offered that as well, and the only person that took us up really up on that was Waste Management. Casella was nowhere to be found. We requested their presence multiple times, that they would come in and talk to us. And again, that was based on a 2% increase per year, and you're talking about 10-year contracts. So, you know, now it's a 4%, but it's a valid point to see what, to try to tighten it up to figure out exactly, exactly the amount. I agree with Counselor Marquetti. I don't know if you can get it down to the exact penny on it. I don't think anybody up here is looking for the exact penny, but, you know, you're right, voters want to know what they're going to be paying for and how they're going to be paying for it. The luxury of this is the fact that we provided multiple options, and you could vote on this this year, you could do it June 14th, you could do it November, you could do it next June, you could do a special election, you could do it five years from now. And we provided an option if you don't vote on it. So you just have to educate the populace on independent contracting or anything else. You also have an option, as pay as you throw, through undercontracting, contracted collection, but then you raise other concerns, and what I got from the town council, that meeting that we had, where we made that vote to move forward with the contract collection, a lot of councils up here talked about the taxes because it made it a mandatory event, that the residents would have to go buy commercial and all that. So it does affect everybody. You know, the economy can continue to go the way it's going right now for five more years, but it could also drop really quick through a recession that we, all of us up here went through really quick as well. So we don't know in two years exactly how the economy is going to change or stay the same or better for our lives or worse for our lives, but we have the option, we provided those options to the council. I would say this, I, yeah, we can do it in November, but what responses are we going to get back? We've asked multiple times for people to tell us, including counselors, to say, what is it you're looking for in that contract? Even though we're not going through contract negotiations, do you want six, do you want three-family homes? What do you want? Do you want bulk pickup free, well, within your taxes or within, whatever it may be? There's all these options, but there hasn't been a lot of discourse, at least coming my way on the curbside collection. Now, I've heard some residents give me calls, but, and that's gone over the last couple of years. But the town council has that option of going independent contracting, and if that doesn't work out, you put it up for two and a half override the following year or two years from now. We have that option. As far as the taxes concerned, I completely agree. It's hard to sit there and, if you're not partaking in the amount of trash, but being paid, having to pay more because your property value is higher, I completely understand that. And so, you know, going from there, yeah, I agree with you, it was pay as you throw, but then you come in, I will say this, pay as you throw option can also cause a very negative issue within the town, because if somebody's not paying as you throw, but they're dumping illegally in the town, that already has a situation where there's illegal dumping, yet Casella picks up trash every week, I think it's just going to grow, and then you, the town council's going to, and the town residents are going to have to pay more, because you're going to have to have a couple part-time DPW workers to pick up trash, you know, throughout the week, you're going to have to purchase a new vehicle, you're going to have to add people to your roles here in the town hall, and so you're going to add those as well. And plus, you're mandated that we're going to, the municipality trash pickup, schools in the town hall and police station, that's going to be in your, in our budget every single year, plan some. So we're going to have to pay for all that somehow. So I think they're valid questions, but I say this, town council has, we've had a lot of time to have this discussion, and I think it's now, it's time to act or move along to another plan. Thank you.
Counselor Marquetti, then Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I would just like to point out that my property taxes pays for a lot of things in town, pays for the schools. I don't have any kids in school, but I pay for the school. My neighbor has five kids, all going to school. I'm paying the same as he's paying in, for my property taxes. As far as the contract, the contract's ending in March of 2024, and Waste Management came to our meeting and said it would be a good idea if you add something, if we could bid on this or not bid, but put a proposal together a year in advance, and that's why we're trying to get this going. Pay as you throw is okay for some communities, but Southbridge is pretty congested, and we're going to have a lot of trucks on our road if we go pay everybody on their own. So that's why I was more in favor of having it contracted for everyone, and the more residents who participate, the less the cost. So that's why I'm in favor of that proposal. And I have had a lot of residents speak to me who say they would like to keep it exactly the way it is now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Jovan.
Thank you. So through you, make no mistake, I agree with the curbside collection. I'm talking the timing and what we get. That's all I'm talking about, timing. All right? Yes, the contract ends in March of 2024. That will mean that it's going to end, I believe, in FY '24? Is that correct? FY '24?
Yeah.
FY '24.
March. March is FY '25.
But that is FY '24.
24.
We're now doing budgets for FY '23. This election that we go into is only FY '23's budget cycle. When curbside ends in March of 2024, there's only going to be three months of which the town would have to pick up that cost of picking up trash. The real impact doesn't come until FY '25, where you have the full year of funding curbside collection. So what I'm saying is, we're going to vote in June of FY '23, an override that won't really take effect until FY '25. You disagree with that, Counselor Marquetti? I mean, that's the fact.
I'm sorry, I just don't think it works that way. I think you have to pay for a contract. I think that's the way it works.
You're not going to pay for performance until FY '25. So that's what I'm saying. Why are we rushing to the June ballot if we can take a little more time and say, okay, we talked to Casella and we mentioned, hey, this is our thought? If we now go to these different purveyors and say, the town in March of 2024 has to begin curbside collection, and we will be developing an RFP, and these are the services that we will be looking at, can you provide us a best cost estimate of what it will be in FY '25? That shouldn't be that complicated to then go to the ballot box and say, it's 1.8, it's 2.3? We really don't know. That's my point. Okay? We're just going to say, hey, 1.8, we think it's the best guess based on prior conversations of what people said that we think we're going to do, or we might do. Many companies, they'll say, we don't know. Listen, Casella knows of all of them that we're done, and that's why, okay, we can use it as negotiations as well and bring in other carriers and haul us. It's a pretty big town, it's going to be a good contract. So if this council, I'm all for curbside collection because we want to have the best service for our residents. Okay? So that isn't open for debate. And then I know Mr. Pelletier has brought up some proposals about doing the electronic recycling and all that, I think are all great ideas, that the town could do some of that side stuff. So let's figure out exactly what curbside collection's going to look like and solicit some quotes that say, in FY '25, and we can budget, the town council can budget over the next two years for the remaining three months based on per month cost, so that we know in FY '25, this is what it's going to absolutely cost for the entire year and the impact to the taxpayers. And that's my only point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pelletier, do you have anything to add?
Listening to Counselor Jovan, I think he makes some sense. The closer we add to the event, the better we will know the price of this thing, or the better we can project the price of this thing. There is an unknown, or there is actually a known that you don't know. Any contract that's going to be awarded is going to require a certain amount of time to purchase the vehicles and the equipment to institute this contract, and right now, talking with, not United Republic, and talking with Casella, that's anywhere from a 15 to 18-month delay, in which they would add on to any contract we come up with, $7,000 per vehicle per month until they get their own equipment, because they would have to rent that equipment. So we are potentially looking at a $21,000 to $28,000 additional fee from the time we give the contract till the time the, that equipment comes in. So we need to look at that. I like where Counselor Jovan's going. If the council is willing to put it out to bid and assign that contract before we're sure that the people are going to approve the monies, because if we wait till November to do this, to do this ballot question, then we have to start the RFP process, a couple of months there, then we have to assign the contract, draft the contract and assign the contract, we could be putting our backs up against the legitimacy of seeing the contract go up due to rental of this equipment. So, and I'd have to ask the town manager to research, can we actually assign the contract before we have the dollars? I don't know. That's town manager stuff, that's bigger than me. But my concern is that without assigning that contract, 15 to 18 months before institution of the program, we might be incurring additional costs.
Outside?
I am.
Okay.
Unless there's questions.
Don't go away. Counselor Adams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would disagree. I would rather see it go to fiscal year '24 budget to prepare to be able to pay for some of these things that we're gonna have to, to pay for in advance. Um, I do agree with Mr. Pelletier. Our back will be against the wall in November. Now, it's up to all nine of us to make that decision for the ballot question. So we'll do that vote or whatever, how it's gonna go, if it even goes that way. But I would highly recommend that you do it, the, the town council put it on, uh, put it in for the '24, FY '24. That way you have that, you, they can start, we already, we're just already working on the contract, contracts now, whatever it may be, what, what the specific things are gonna be in there. I just think we're, we're not rushing this because we started this in 2019, and we came to the town council and we provided this information a long time ago. Yeah, I would love to be able to write a contract, you know, a year before, but I think it's just gonna be tough for the town and then educating the town and figuring all this stuff out. It takes some time. And there's gonna be mistakes that go along the way, unfortunately, uh, things that are out of our control, or hopefully we thought about everything. But I, I don't recommend FY '25. I do recommend FY '24 if this is the will of the town council to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I hear everybody concerned what we're gonna provide the residents. Why we don't keep think the way it is right now, and we draft what we provide, Casella provide to the residents right now, and we put a contra together and then we put it out for bid. And then after the bid come back, they can, we can decide what we're gonna do with the money, where the money come from. If you wanna add it on the, on the, on the residence tax, uh, by unit, I think by unit is better from house because some unit six, I mean, some apartment six families, some houses, single family, like we say in the past, it's not fair to a person on one family pay more in what the six family is gonna put out for trash. So we can go by the unit, uh, on the tax. But meantime, I think, uh, since 2019 was, you know, nothing was, I discussed and think, but you guys still stuck in the same place. What we're gonna provide the residents, I think we should look what we provide right now, put it on, uh, in writing, and then put it out there for bid, Casella, other company, and then that will give you an idea if you need to remove something or keep it the way it is on, on, uh, money wise. Thank you.
Council Steve.
Um, yeah, one more thing. I've been listening to everybody, and I think, I, I'm inclined to agree at the moment both with what Jack and what Joe were saying. Um, but one thing that we haven't, um, raised, but I think we raised at the previous meeting, is that we're all kind of talking to ourselves and literally in a circle right now. We haven't heard from the citizens. Um, I think it would be a good idea to do a public hearing to get them, get their views of what they want, which might be an issue because unfortunately, public turnout for public hearings isn't that great, it never has been, but it would be nice. This is an important issue that everybody needs to get involved in, and we need to know what, what it is that they want, what, throughout the ideas, take some of these things that we've been talking about, put, literally lay them out, maybe even have them as a handout and check, have them, have the citizen check them off and say, do you want this? Do you want this? Do you not want this? Whatever. When they show up and, we did that, or we could do, or we could send it out as a survey with the, with the tax bills. Something that can, that we get some serious information from them about what they want.
That's called a vote. Huh? So that's called a vote?
Well, I'm not, I'm not being specific. I'm not talking about necessarily the ballot question because we would have to do that too. I'm talking about the idea of something very, something much more general and that looks at the specific parts of the service that they want, that they really think they need to add, and what we, what we can possibly do without if we have to.
Okay. Council Joe Van.
Okay. So I guess I'll just ask this last final question through you. Estimate was that it was 4%. Has anybody had any follow-up conversations with these companies to talk about what their costs are given the current economic, uh, situation? So if we can have those conversations and you can get a better sense from those, either whatever company you talk to about what it is current and what they anticipate the increase? Because I know at our fire station building committee meeting last night, one of the bids that went out for, for one of their contracts, they estimated put a 30% general conditions, Council Lazo, 30% general conditions on their bid. 30%. And the architect was like, how could you go 30%? Usually it's 8%. And they said, just because of the economic climate. So maybe if you get some of those questions answered, and I would not recommend it on April 11th, do it on April 25th. If April 25th is a drop deadline, you have 25 days to get some information and bring it back to council that made me feel comfortable putting on a ballot question. Get some of those questions answered. Because 4%, I believe is too low with a 7% to 10% to double-digit inflation. So that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Mike Hattie.
Uh, through you, I, I don't have a problem discussing it April 11th, April 25th. I have no problem either one. I know where I stand on this, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with whichever one you wanna do. That's fine. Thank you.
My, my only point was, if we're gonna vote a dollar question and put it on a ballot with a dollar question, it's better to have enough information than not enough. So what's the harm of two more weeks to call around and get some, maybe some better numbers based on those preliminary numbers that you had before? That's my only point. I have no problem voting it, but let, let, let's work on getting some good solid numbers the 25th. If the 25th is drop deadline day, then I'll make a motion tonight that you bring the question forward on April 25th if you want, but I think that's the best course of action for me to be comfortable, but I'm not, I'm only one, but.
Second?
Well, the next question.
We have a motion in a second, discussion. Council Adams.
The one thing I would ask, and I don't have a problem with it, if the town council doesn't vote on anything, we're gonna have to deal with the trash curbside, so it's really up to, to figure this one out for the town council. But I would ask that question that we've been asking for a time. What do you want? Do you want the max thing, everything 100% six families in there? Do you want three families? Do you want pay as you throw in there? Do you want? Those are the questions we've been asking. So if you want everything in there, that's a pretty, pretty much easy, here you go, get a quote, get a, get a quote and then see where the town council wants to go from that point. But if you're willing to break it down and go through each one of them, then, uh, you know, I think that's a further discussion, so. But whatever the council would like to do, I'm good with it. Thank you.
So that's my exact point. My exact point was just proven by the fact that we haven't made a decision about what services we're gonna get for 1.8. The original question was here was, we're gonna throw a ballot question on and say there's a dollar amount. Now it's, well, what services we're gonna get? That's my exact point. Let's pin down what we're gonna get and what services we're gonna get. If it's curbside collection and it's all these other things, then fine. I don't have a problem with it, and let's make a decision. But my early assumption on this whole conversation was, we were putting a ballot question for curbside collection with a $1.8 million figure. That was the surmise of this original question, are we gonna put it on the ballot? So let's define what exactly we're putting on the ballot, and is there a dollar amount? That's, I, maybe we have, we can have further discussion on that, but I'm all for curbside collection, and if it's up to six families, I don't know what the Board of Health regulations and what they do down in the Board of Health, because I have no idea what they do down there with decisions. Let's figure it out. And then my point is, if we're gonna put a ballot question out there, the voters of this town and the taxpayers have to know exactly what they're voting on and what they're gonna get. Thank you.
Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think the last meeting we spoke, we kept the way it is, six family was included, so I'm not sure why we asking again what we're gonna provide. I think we include all the way it was, six family, four family, three family, and the only was confused about what the tax rate is gonna be on these, uh, building, and then we suggest, you know, it's not fair to a single family and six family paying less than the single family, what they're gonna dispose of more trash. That's why I think we should go by the unit, not by, uh, uh, the house value. Uh, it should be how many unit, that's, I think we should price and, and include it all the building, because some building in town, they can't provide their own dumpsters because they don't have a place to put it. If you wanna not include the six family, you're gonna have a problem. They're gonna have, uh, issue, put a dumpster on, on the place on their property because it's not bigger enough to add in the dumpster for them. I think you should keep the way it is right now, up to six family and charge the tax by the unit. Thank you.
Council Lazo.
Um, I'm a pay by the bag guy. That's what I think is the option. It's the only fair way to do it. A six family, I'm not sure if the six family is under this contract, uh, now, but to me, a six family is a business. People own apartment buildings to make money. People in a single-family home live to survive, pay their bills, raise their family, go to school, cost of living, and trash is part of cost of living. Um, but the thing is, how can you tax a property when somebody's dumping six units of trash into the, and it's gonna be taxed on the value of the building? And then you got a single-family home that's probably valued somewhere near that six family, that's gonna pay the same amount? I'm not in favor of that. So as a council, if you ask me what I think the option is, you pay by the bag. You put 20 bags in, you pay for 20 bags. Single-family homeowner puts one bag, he pays for one bag. I know everybody keeps saying, oh, trash will be all over the town. Come on, let's just tax everybody and, and pick it up and not worry about it. Let's bring a little responsibility to the homeowners and to the people that have trash. It's their responsibility. They, they wanna throw it on the street? I, I beg to differ. I don't, I really don't think people in Southbridge feel like they just wanna throw all their trash on the, on the street, but that's a boogeyman to deal with down the road, and I'm willing to deal with that. Thank you.
Council Adams, then Council Mike Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Buy the bag, I think is an issue because maybe one of the, uh, building of the residents, not the owner, he doesn't wanna buy a bag. So what do you do then? You know, you, you put a risk more on, uh, on the owner of the property. I don't think the owner should provide bags, and some residents, they don't wanna pay for bags. I think we should keep it as a container, the way it is. Every unit allowed to put certain amount of weight and, uh, let the owner be responsible through his payment, as you say, is a, is a business. So you should charge by the unit. That will be fair for everybody. Businessman invest money, uh, he wanna make money, he's gonna pay a little more from somebody live here and a single family raises family. But buy the bag, I think that's an issue, because if I rent an apartment, I'm not gonna pay, uh, I don't wanna buy bags, so I'm gonna throw the trash down and, and you will find out where or how you're gonna pick up the trash, number one. Number two, uh, you're not putting responsible on, on the building owner, because you're gonna be fighting with the building owner and the residents. It's, it's gonna be mess. I don't think it's a good idea. Could keep it the way it is, by the container, by the way, every apartment allow certain weight, trash, certain weight of this recycling, and charge the, the owner of how many unit, uh, the price on the tax. Thank you.
Council Mike Hattie.
Uh, thank you. I'll just end it on this, kinda full circle. When we met as a committee, we made a recommendation, so there's no confusion about what we are recommending. We recommended it, everybody. We have contracted service, the same as we have now. This is how many residents. This is how many, um, um, what type of services we have. So there were no, there was no confusion there. As far as taxes go, I, like I said earlier, I pay for school and I don't use the school as much as others, so there's no way around something like that. It's not based on how many bags you have, somebody throws more, so they gotta pay more. It's based on your property value, so, uh, that's all I have to say on this tonight. I think on April 25th, we'll have more to say about it. Thank you.
Council Lazo.
Um, again, representative former government, what I'm hearing is pay by the bag. I'm gonna vote for that option. Um, my personal opinion might be different than what everybody's talking about, but for me, when, when you, when you go around talking to various people, it seems like, you know, what's fair? What's equitable? And then all of a sudden, they start talking about their house and their trash. Well, depending on who you're talking to, that's why, you know, for me, I have a clear conscience voting for pay by the bag. That's what I'm hearing. So, I mean, if you wanna sell another product, sell another product. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we've had a good discussion. I've taken a lot of notes down on what people have said. Um, I think I've got a general idea as to what the council's looking for. Um, I'm gonna continue to discuss this with, uh, Councilors Adams and Mike Hattie, and also with the town manager. And, uh, we'll get back to you with some solid answers, I'm sure, at some point in the near future. Uh, we do need, I'm sorry.
We gotta take a vote? There was a motion?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, forgot about that. We have a motion in a second on the floor to, um, have the, to have, I guess, me come back to the council, um, or...
My motion was to have a vote on April 25th.
Right.
On whatever we're proposing to the voters.
Right. So we need to, we need to collate it all and put it together.
And just as a follow-up, because I, I wanna get to the budget, because we spent a lot of time on something that I didn't anticipate. If we're gonna have a vote, previous speaker said that we, we discussed, discussed making any options, and Council Mike Hattie's saying, we did pick something, which I thought we did, so let's have specific votes. Vote curbside collection, this, that, this. Specific votes on that agenda and not do this discuss, discuss, discuss with not any specific vote on the agenda. If we're gonna vote something, vote it. We all say that we hear things, but have a specific agenda, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. Council Adams.
Real quick, first of all, the, the agenda item says discuss and update, so there's a motion on the table all of a sudden. I have a problem with us doing it on the 25th. I don't care if we do it on the 11th. Nobody cares. Just do, make it happen. And to sit there and tell me and tell the committee that there were no options up there to, for councillors to come back to us and have questions and pick what you want is a farce. There, it's been there. We're not in a rush. We weren't in a rush. We have to make a, a big decision on, uh, for the town, but don't tell me we didn't give options. We gave all kinds of options. And look at the town council right now. Everybody's got an option. Every one of you. I'm just saying, you gotta decide what you wanna really wanna do. And, and I'm not understanding why the motion's even on the table. Just on the 25th, that's fine. That's all I've got.
Mr. Chairman, just, the reason the motion is here is so that we can make a final decision. That's the reason why I asked to have a vote. Because this committee is looking to see what direction we're going in, so let's give them the direction. Vote. Vote on April 25th. That's the date. We will vote on the recommended course, which was, which we already voted on, and then say how much it's gonna cost. That's why it's on April 25th.
Just point of clarification, Mr. Chair. There's no more committee. Thank you.
Can we move the question?
That ended in June of 2020.
Very good.
Move the question, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Yeah, I'm, we're moving it.
2020, I think it was.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Um, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes, all present. I'd like to call a five-minute recess in order for preparations for the budget presentation to take place. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. At this point, we're at agenda item number six, vote to accept the donation of desk Yeah, we're moving it.
2020, I think it was.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes, all present. I'd like to call a five-minute recess in order for preparations for the budget presentation I'd like to call this meeting back to order. At this point, we're at agenda item number six, vote to accept the donation of desk chairs and frolic cabinets from the Stoppage Credit Union Auburn branch to the collector's office.
So move.
Any discussion? I'd like to thank very wholeheartedly the Stoppage Credit Union for their wonderful donation of furniture and equipment. It's definitely being well-received by members of the town hall, and I'm very happy that they considered us for their, their needs. So thank you very much to the Stoppage Credit Union. All those in favor? Opposed?
Favor, favor.
Unanimous of all present. Very good. Agenda item number seven, presentations. The town manager will now present the budget.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. We have staff and residents and those watching at home. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present my second budget to you with the assistance of my staff. I tried to do a couple takeaways from last year. My presentation will look somewhat similar, use the same format. I'll get into talking about financial trend monitoring. I was told to try and make it a little more readable. I did that. I was told I didn't have enough slides, so I doubled the amount of slides, so we'll be here for quite a while. I, I did that for Counsel Lazo because I know he wants to see my humor. That's, that's the best you're going to get, so. But seriously, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law and the Town of Southbridge Home Rule Charter, I'm pleased to present this FY 2023 operating budget as well as the capital budget. Finance team and I have endeavored to provide a stable set of consistent budgets with only moderate increases which adhere to town council policy. This year's operating budget totals 6.44, $64.45 million, and we have a combined capital budget of almost $19 million. As we begin on the second budget, I want to recognize all of our employees and their efforts in this past year, and thank the entire staff for supporting each other and the community during these unprecedented times. And I thought about it this evening as I was doing this. It was almost two years ago this week that we all started into the lockdown, and it's amazing where we've come, that we're sitting here tonight without masks, we can walk freely, and we're slowly starting to see a rebound in our economic state here and changes in our local revenue, which is a positive thing. As the pandemic approaches an end, as I just indicated, we're looking forward to a restoration of our pre-pandemic economic state. Unfortunately, this past year, we still had to endure a second surge of the COVID-19 pandemic, including the Omicron variant, as well as town hall has been hit by the great resignation, as many of our local businesses have. As a result, we've continued to deal with uncertainty and deal with the challenges, disruptions, and lasting effects of this pandemic, coupled with the recent spike in inflation and economic turmoil that we've seen as a result of global events. Due to this uncertainty, we've instructed all departments to submit a level service budget, assuming the prior FY 22 budget as their base. Further, they were all instructed to maintain current service levels with no budgetary increases, positions, nor service expansions, except for the proposed positions that I indicated in my cover letter to staff to address town council priorities and community needs. After which time, Ms. Harneys and I met with the department heads, along with our new HR Director and Assistant Town Manager, Adriana Lealina, and we went through each budget line by line, making recommendations, reductions, and other adjustments as necessary to provide this level service budget. In this proposed $64.45 million budget, it is founded on the town's existing financial policy directives and prudent fiscal management, which includes the basic principle that one-time revenues should be used for one-time expenditures and sustainable budgeting practices. To maintain all operation levels, we rely on projections of available revenue within the town's limits and financial resources. This budget is based upon the established ceiling of derived reasonable property tax increases pursuant to Proposition 2 and 1/2. Additional revenues include excise taxes, state aids, fees, permits, interest, as well as available funds such as free cash and state and federal grant monies, including monies received under the American Rescue Plan Act. The format that I'm going to use is very similar to last year. Quickly do an overview. Again, this is based on a model that I've used. This is the fourth time I've used this, the second community. It's the second time with you folks. And I, I first developed this working with Professor Douglas Snow at Suffolk University, and it incorporates, I have a slide that reiterates it, but the International County Managers Association Financial Trend Monitoring. So I incorporate that as we go forward. Of note, what you can see is our population has increased since the last time we were here, based on the, the most recent census. We're now projected to have over 17,000 people in the town. I got the most recent labor and unemployment rate information, that should actually say the labor force for 2022. So our unemployment rate, it did spike during the height of the pandemic, but it's been coming back down. Our DOR, Department of Revenue Income per capita, has increased. Our current residential and commercial property rate tax, tax rates are at $17.90. Because of the changes during COVID and people looking to work at home, most communities experienced an unprecedented increase in appreciation in commercial and in residential real estate. And, and I hate to use the word unprecedented, but we've seen nothing like this in the past. And the, the average single-family home in this community has, has increased significantly. I believe this time last year, it was just over 200,000, and now we're looking at 238,000. And the property taxes increased up over $4,266 for the average family. Our budget has increased from last year up to $64.5 million. We continue to maintain our double A-minus rating, and our population is roughly, our school population is roughly the same, and we still have one middle high school and four elementary schools. Our budgeting priorities, not much different than last year, education, public safety, which includes our fire, police, and DPW. We're looking at capital infrastructure with oversight, network security, health and human services. The highlights, I understand the print is a little small, and I apologize for those at home. This current year's budget incorporates the changes we made last year with the new human resources department, the restructuring of our cable department, which was proposed at a recent subcommittee meeting and adopted by council, price increases relative to motor vehicle fuel, rubricants, and oil budgets. As we all know, due to recent spikes in inflation as well as geopolitical concerns in Europe, we've seen gas prices and other energy prices escalate at a rapid pace. With the departure of our assessor, who was also our IT Director, Will Canoyer, we're looking to add a full-time IT Director as part of the data processing budget, and I don't have to tell you folks, each night when you watch the evening news, the threats of cybersecurity, excuse me, cyber attacks and the need for cybersecurity is imperative for all sorts of business organizations, including municipalities. I am a proponent of education, and we've talked about with our new HR, creating a line item for tuition. Our police budget is looking at funding a 39th position. We can talk a little bit more about that. We've gone four times in four years for Safer Grant to get additional firefighters for the town. As you know, we run 24-hour shifts, so we need a complement of four firefighters to have one person extra on shift on a 24-hour basis. So what we've done is for the second half of the year, we have funded in this budget those positions. In the event that we do not get the Safer Grant, we want to consider committing to funding those four positions for public safety. The DPW budget includes one new maintenance position and one new staff engineer. This is to address construction oversight as well as stormwater. We have a recreation director that was recently talked about at one of the subcommittee meetings, Mr. Brunel. He's doing a great job, and there's been interest in having him moved to a full-time status, so we placed that in the budget. The Southbridge Public Schools is funded in three categories, from state aid and tax, general operating, capital, and a master facility study. The last item has probably generated a lot of buzz, and I've had to talk to the Insurance Advisory Commission. The staff and I had looked at the trends that we've seen in our health insurance costs, the number of employees, and we are advocating and building into this budget a 70/30 percentage split for the health insurance. And what is interested to note is because we received a significant increase in state aid, and a lot of it went to the schools, Southbridge Public Schools, working with Dr. Valar, they've agreed to give some of the monies that they received in the increase back to the town side to help us achieve this goal of a 70/30 split on our insurance. And the real reason that we're doing this, one, you know, our employees worked here throughout the pandemic, other communities didn't. But we're in a position, after the great resignation, where we've seen a lot of turnover, and I have a slide to address that. But the number one issue I've heard from department heads is recruitment and retention. And I've sat through many a job interview process here as we've tried to fill some of these positions, and we've had people come in, and when we get to the, any questions portion, they ask us about our benefits offering, and that can be a make or break for a lot of people. And if you talk to our public safety and DPW department heads, they'll tell you that they're losing people to our neighboring towns that all offer a 70/30 split. So to be competitive, to retain the quality people we have and recruit quality people going forward, and to acknowledge the hard work of our employees, we believe that this is the right thing and the right time to do it. So I joked about doubling the number of slides. We can just go through this. This explains the whole background of the financial trend monitoring system I went into in detail the last year. Very quickly, this is a breakdown. I tried to make these a little bit more readable, the font's a little bigger, and the color's a little more preferable to those watching from home. This is a breakdown of where the increases are, and you can see where the most change occurred. And it really, a lot of the increase, the $4 million difference from last year, almost half of it goes directly to the schools, and that comes with the increased amount of state aid that they received, as well as the increase in net school spending. When we start to put into general government in these other areas, these new employees as well as all of our other contracted increases, that makes up the increases in general government, insurance. Retirement has always been something that's gone up. We received some additional charges and assessments this year. Our debt has not gone up considerably, and we have some slides to deal with that. Bay Path has asked for a modest increase. Our cable budget has actually gone down. We're still in contract negotiations with charter, as well as we have nothing, no change in our abatements and exemptions, and our sheet offsets went down. So the net is, we had a 6.82% increase in the budget. However, it's a balanced budget, and we can go through it in more detail. Here's an allocation of how that $64.5 million operation is, operating budget is broken down. Almost half of it goes to Southbridge Public Schools, 2% to Bay Path, 8% to benefits insurance, debt services 5%, public works 3%, police 7%, fire 4%. General government and human services is 8%, and the remainder of state overlay and retirement is 7%, and library is 1%. What happened with the, the Southbridge Public Schools this year, as I indicated, there was a $2.4 million increase in Chapter 70 money in the governor's proposed budget, and then our, our charter school reimbursement also went up. So we saw a net increase in, in receipts of almost $2.9 million, or a 12% increase. We add in the assessments, there was some increase in our assessments, and the total aid that is coming to the schools is $3.6 million, or a 13% increase over last year. Coupled with that is an increase in net school spending, so that, you know, this is not just money that they can hand back over to the town. We're required to meet that, those, those levels as a foundation budget. But working with Dr. Valar and Mr. Racine, we had some discussions about the amount of funding they received, and we, we talked about using some for capital, for doing a study so that they can go out for school business assistance loan and giving some of the money back to the town to help defray the costs of the 70/30 insurance split, which would help them in their recruitment efforts as well. Here is just a quick trend of what's happened with Bay Path. You can see that it, it went down a little in 2022, and it's, is back to about 2021 levels with the projected 2023 budget. Our enrollment went from 211 students down to 202, but there was no real other change with Bay Path other than the, the slight increase this year. Our enterprise funds, there wasn't any significant change in the projected amounts for 2023. Those are based off the rates and the receipts we take from our water and sewer customers. Our capital budget, when we get there, it, it's going to be a little bit different, and it may require some time when we get to subcommittee. I, as well as the staff, tried to implement some of the information that was discussed during our capital planning ad hoc committees. We incorporated a new form, we incorporated a new presentation format. It's something that I borrowed by looking at some other communities, but it doesn't break it out the same way we used to. So we can experiment with this, and if there's changes, we can work on it through the course of the budget process. We could fine-tune it, and if we want to scrap it for next year, that's fine. But we're trying to be responsive to what was discussed here in the council chambers and that ad hoc committee. So we have a combined $19.1 million general water and sewer set of capital improvements. If you just cull out the general capital expenditures, it's roughly $7.75 million, which is about 12% of the operating budget, which is consistent with our town policy. I know it's a little hard to read down the bottom, but I'll get to it in a minute, but the, the, the primary highlights are going to be DPW vehicles, police cruisers. The fire department has asked for some mobile radios, as well as an administrative vehicle. There's significant water and sewer, as well as infrastructure improvements, and those will be detailed in your books. The new format, and unfortunately, this did really not come out well on this screen, I apologize, but instead of what we had in the past where you had multiple sheets for each year, other towns went into a form where they had it all on one sheet, and each column represents a year. And for those of you who can't truly tell what's going on, the, the blue column is fiscal 2023, and in the left-hand side would be the amount of the request from the department head, and in the right column, in the blue, there would be a code based on a funding source. So for instance, A up there is essentially free cash. We have other funding codes for ARPA, for enterprise funds, state aid, so that you can see what the funding source is. And to the far, far left, we have a capital code to tell you whether this is for infrastructure, buildings, facilities, vehicles, so that as you go through it in your book, you should be able to look left and right to tell what somebody's buying, what the purpose for it is based on a code, and what the funding source is. And when we get down to the bottom of this particular document, and you'll see it in your books, we sum it by funding source as well as by the, the government category. So it's something new. We're trying to respond to what was asked for in the chambers. Hopefully, when you look at it in your book, it makes more sense. I'll be happy to entertain any questions. And similarly, we introduced a new capital budget form, which is similar to what you see on the screen now. Again, with our ad hoc committee, there was discussion about trying to put a more detailed form together. The bottom would show what year that it was going to come in. To the far, far right, it would give funding sources, which would align with the funding sources on that form. You would get a picture of the item that's in question. You'd get a description, talk about what, what the amount is, whether it's been asked for before. So this will help us going forward to have a better capital budget, but I still believe in speaking with Ms. Harneys and other members of our financial team that we should form an actual capital planning committee that meets throughout the course of the year on a regular basis comprised of members from certain departments, maybe some citizens, as well as representation from the school and, and the council, so that we can go on a regular basis reviewing requests so that it doesn't become something that gets rushed. And I, it, it doesn't, a lot of communities get rushed towards the end of budget season, but this should be something that is given more attention, and I think with a larger group putting more eyes on it, you'd get a better end product. So we're putting together the format. We talked about having the capital planning committee during the ad hoc discussions. So I think if we start putting these pieces together, you know, by next year, we would have a really good presentation that would stand alone and be what the council is looking for. I broke down the, the, the tax bill, where your dollars are going to. I think it's important to have people to know where every one of their tax dollars go. So on an average family, tax bill of the $4,266, 48, you know, $2,059 is going to the schools. And you can walk your way right down through Bay Path, the various public works and public safety departments and see where your dollars go, but the vast majority, almost half of the, the bill goes to funding our school system here. Primary sources of funding, again, our property tax levy gets almost 40% of our, our funding source. State aid is making up almost 48% of the budget. Our local receipts are rebounding, as I indicated. They're making up 8%, and available funds rounds it out at 4.5%. In your book, you'll see this. We have a breakdown of the actual revenues by, in a little more detail, under the property tax. We, we had slightly less new growth than we had in, hoped for. It went down, but our new assessor came in and it was, we talked about it. She- She came back with a little more conservative estimate. I have no problem with being conservative, but I wouldn't wanna, uh, overestimate, but it, we will continue to try and attract businesses, and we're working on it. You know what we're doing with our, our grants. We're pursuing them aggressively in an event to bring businesses in, and you can see the development that's happening in the projects on K Street and the Wells School. So, we, we anticipate there'll be more new growth in the coming year. Um, as I indicated, you can see all the numbers for our state aid, how they've increased on the, the far right, ten percent. In Chapter Seventy, our unrestricted, uh, government aid went up slightly. That's the money that comes directly to the town. Um, our local receipts have started to rebound, as I indicated, almost to the level of 2021, but not quite to what they were pre-pandemic. Um, and our enterprise and other funds have just increased moderately over the last, um, year. Just a different representation, even though the budget has grown, um, to sixty-four point four or five million dollars, the, the actual breakdown, uh, in the last five or six years, if you do a comparison to 2015, uh, the proportion has not changed much. But what you will see is the tax levy has picked up slightly more of the, the burden in the last year or so. And that's really due to the decrease in local receipts. And I do have a trend line which will show that it did dip significantly last year, which was really pandemic-related, but the expectation is it, it, when I, we know it went up this year, and we anticipate it will continue to grow next year. This is, just looks at the growth rates, and I think it's important to look at the growth rates in your revenue. Um, where we've been seeing the, the greatest increase, uh, is in residential property tax is grown, the growth rate over the last six years, it's increased quicker, our reliance on those revenues than our state aid. State aid only grew at four percent, so we're slightly outpacing, um, state aid, and we would like to see our, the growth in our hotel meals and other ta, local receipts continue to rise. And so, we're, we're optimistic that that will be the case in the next fiscal year. And again, here are those revenue trends. Um, this really just looks at the tax levy as a percent of total revenue, which means we're relying slightly more each year. We're, the percentage of our total revenue, um, that uses tax revenue has been increasing, and state aid as a percent of total revenue has been decreasing. And you can see on the bottom, that's the chart of our combined local receipts. You can see the dip in 2020, and you can see how it rebounded in fiscal twenty, in, well, that's calendar year 2021, almost back to what it was in 2018, not where it was in 2019. So, we're optimistic that if you were to draw a trend line across there in another year or so, we will see our local receipts, um, return. Won't spend a lot of time on these. You can, I can provide this to you after we're done, but the indicators, using the financial trend monitoring from the ICMA, shows that our, our tax revenue, especially our elastic revenues, are starting to rebound. So, I changed this from last year, where it was, uh, I had it as unfavorable. Based on the trend that we're turning it around, I've listed it as favorable. So, that's the importance and the, the usefulness of the financial trends. You can look year to year to see what, what's been happening, and we had some red last year. This year, we have at the end on my matrix, you have more green and some neutral columns as well. This is the, uh, the local receipts, and that's neutral because it, it was down last year. It's come up a little bit. We wanna see it to continue to go, and probably next year, it'll be in the green. Um, this is just a, uh, growth chart showing state aid for the last six years. Um, we've seen our charter reimbursements go up, um, significantly, but the growth rate in our, um, state aid increases is not really matching what we're seeing in our reliance on our local property taxes. Uh, we did get a significant increase this year, as I indicated, for Chapter Ninety, excuse me, Chapter Seventy, but we would like to see more aid coming into the town. And these are the state aid trends in the top, just showing it is going up, but when you compare it to our reliance on the property tax, which is in blue on the bottom, you see that the lines are almost intersecting, where we used to get back in, uh, twenty years ago, we used to get double the amount of state aid relative to our property tax, and now it's coming down almost to fifty-fifty. So, even though they'll tell us, we've increased your state aid, we aren't in a position where we were twenty years ago in the amount of aid that you're getting. Uh, we used to get two dollars in state aid for every dollar we raised in property taxes. Now, the only good thing about that in the, when you look at, uh, financial trend monitoring is they don't want to see an over-reliance on state aid. So, the fact that we have a, a good blend, um, of state aid, and we do have a healthy tax base, that works in our favor. Although this is one-time revenues, I thought it would be important to point out ARPA because we're going to use that in our capital budget. And I put in a, a slide here just to show that we did receive last year five point oh four million dollars, and to date, we've, um, encumbered and used, uh, one point six seven three million dollars of that. And those are the, the projects we've used to date. So, we have a remaining amount of three point four million dollars. Chairman, excuse me, Chairman of the Ad Hoc Committee, uh, Counselor Adams, is working with Counselor Steve, myself, to look and gather information from department heads and, and citizen members, what to do with these remaining funds. Um, these are, again, to use the word unprecedented, it's an unprecedented amount of money that's been given us from the federal government to make a lasting impact and to respond to, uh, the, the effects of the, the pandemic. And I think we're using them appropriately, and I look forward to working with these gentlemen to come up with a plan for the council, how to reuse these over the next two fiscal years. Um, these are our expenses. The most notable area of increase was our charter school assessment, as well as, um, we saw some increases in retirement, uh, insurance. The bulk of, as I said, uh, in expenses really boils down to where we are with, uh, the schools. The Southbridge Public Schools went up, uh, almost two million dollars over last year, but again, a lot of that increase is funded by, uh, the, the significant increase in Chapter Seventy money. When you break down those expenses, again, I try and do a five to six-year look back. The, the pie chart doesn't look much different. We're still giving about fifty-three percent of our expenses to, uh, public education, but you do notice, um, there has been some small changes amongst police and fire and DPW. Um, so it's important, Public Works has stayed the same, Fire has gone down a little bit, uh, Police has maintained at seven percent. So, we, we do have to make sure that we monitor and don't let any one particular area fall behind. These are the growth rates, and this is where you can see what I was referring to. Um, you can see the increases in general government expense, police. Um, Fire has grown not as fast as those, but Public Works has fallen behind, as well as some of our other areas, including Human Services and our Culture and Recreation. Our fixed costs fortunately have not increased that much. Those are our insurance, our debt, uh, and other non-discretionary items, but it gives you an idea of the trends. Um, the intergovernmental assessments, those are charges that we get from the state. Those have increased, unfortunately. So, here are the expenditure trends. Um, the top line is overall expenditures. They've continued to increase year over year. The bottom half just shows you our fixed and non-discretionary expenditures. Again, that's things like insurance, debt, um, contracted obligations through not only our union, but other, um, third parties.